... to do tonight, so that's, um, we, we just welcome everyone. Welcome everyone here and everyone at home. And, uh, just, um, you know, uh, just want to open the, uh, City of Fairview Board of Commissioners' regular meeting, November 7th at 7:03 PM. Ms. Jones, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner McDonald.
Present.
Commissioner Johnson.
Present.
Commissioner Hall.
Present.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Present.
Mayor Anderson.
Present.
Item number three is prayer and pledge. Vice Mayor Butler.
Lord, we're meeting today to cook matters of business. We've got our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech. impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, an interior republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four is mayor's comments. Like I said, we're so excited for y'all to be here tonight. We like to not only vote on matters of the city, but recognize accomplishments of our young people and just let them know how important everything they do academically with the band, with sports, is to our community. And we want our community to know how hard you all work and recognize that. If everyone would please make sure that they speak clearly into the mics so that people at home can hear. And with that, uh, we appreciate our police officers here keeping us safe and all of our staff who worked so hard to bring this meeting to y'all. Before the approval of the agenda, I would like to make one change. We will be removing item 7C, which is recognition of the Fairview Middle School football team. We are going to be rescheduling that to another date. So...
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to make an amendment to remove item 11C, new business, from the agenda.
Second.
Anything else? Ms. Jones? Do we need to vote on each item separately?
Well, since they're on the, on the agenda, I, I don't think anyone's concerned about the recognition. I mean, no one's insisting that the recognition for the football team be denied, are they?
Well, I mean, to be rescheduled.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I think that's fine, the way that was done. But I think Mr. or Commissioner Butler made a motion that was first and seconded. So we probably need to vote on that agenda item to remove it, and then we can vote on the agenda.
Okay.
Whether, whether it's removed or not, I mean, you know, once that decision's made.
Okay. Ms. Jones?
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Nay.
Commissioner Hall.
Nay.
Mayor Anderson.
Nay.
So Mr. Carter, uh, help me, what do I need to do to move forward?
Now, we need to approve the agenda. That motion failed, so that will stay on the agenda. And so now we're going to vote on the agenda minus the recognition of the Fairview Middle School football team, 7C.
Okay. Ms. Jones? Second.
Mayor, since we didn't have discussion on the, on my motion, I would just like to make a, a point that we have two incoming commissioners as fill 11C need to be removed. I didn't think it was, we have 14 months on the contract. I didn't think we need to make a decision tonight, so that was why my motion was made.
Thank you. Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald.
Nay.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Nay.
All right. Item five, approval of the agenda is approved 3-2. Item number six, citizens' comments.
Yes, Mayor, there's four tonight. The first, Rod Dawson.
Okay, if you could state your name, address, city, or county, and you will have three minutes.
Yes, Rod Dawson, 7517 Nathaniel Woods Boulevard, Fairview, Tennessee. Madam Mayor and Commissioners, I first want to say that Tom Doherty is an honest and valuable employee of the City of Fairview. These comments do not reflect his, on his character, and I feel he is simply collateral damage in a broken system. I am concerned regarding the proposal to increase the city manager's pay and extend his severance from 12 months to 18 months. While I understand the desire to support city staff, I believe the decision requires careful scrutiny due to the timing, lack of transparency, and ongoing ethical concerns. The city manager's contract isn't up for renewal for another year, yet this proposal is being pushed forward now, when two commissioners who may or may not be aligned with the mayor will vote on the matter before they leave office. This raises concern about rushing decisions before the newly elected commissioners, who may have a different perspective, can weigh in. Additionally, the city manager was appointed without a nationwide search or properly posting the position, which further undermines the confidence and the transparency of this process. Mayor, you were recently interviewed in the media regarding questions of campaign ethics, specifically in your role as treasurer for a commissioner candidate's campaign. In light of this, it is critical that any decisions involving the city manager's contract be handled with the utmost care to avoid any appearance of favoritism or conflict of interest. Approving a substantial pay increase and severance extension for the city manager under these circumstances could further erode public trust. Compensation decisions, decisions for public employees should be based on performance and objective criteria, but there has been no formal review of the city manager's work to justify this change. Additionally, the city must prioritize transparency and accountability when making decisions that affect taxpayer dollars. Without a clear, documented reason for these changes, it would be irresponsible to approve this proposal. In light of these concerns, I urge you, Mayor and Commissioners, to postpone any vote on this matter until the newly elected commissioners can weigh in. The public deserves a transparent process, free of the perception of impropriety, and the decision to alter the city manager's compensation should reflect that. I beg you, start running your board more like an ethical and responsible business. The taxpayers of this city deserve it. Thank you.
Next, we have Don Buffalini.
Good evening, Board. Don Buffalini, uh, 4010 Brazelton Way, Fairview, live in the city. Uh, first, I want to start by thanking each and every citizen here of Fairview for electing myself and Carolyn Roberts as well as part of the new Board of Commissioners. I also wanted to congratulate, uh, the Sound of Gold Marching Band, Fairview Marching Band, for all their accomplishments, so please give them a big round of applause. Uh, my next comment is, uh, no, nothing to our city manager directly, so please understand that. Um, a couple of questions that I have, which I did email the Board earlier so that they do have a copy of it, and I was being, uh, pretty transparent about that. Was the city attorney or any attorney involved in the drafting of the contract for the city manager, the new contract that you guys want to pass? Also, have there been previous instances of contracts being extended more than a year before expiration date and adding additional five years to the current term here in Fairview? Also, what is the justification for the additional $29,000 increase to the annual salary? And was there a review by the Board of Commissioners? Also, why is severance being increased from 12 months to 18 months? What reasoning supports this change, especially given the financial impact of the previous city manager's severance? Number five, considering the expense of the previous city manager's 12-month severance, this amendment seems to place the city at a disadvantage and may not have been well negotiated. Number six, was the city attorney consulted by the Board prior to adding this to the agenda? If so, what advice was given? If not, I recommend postponing this decision until all Board members have re, have received legal counsel. Additionally, I suggest that time be allocated for Fairview residents to ask questions and gain a clearer understanding of this amendment of agenda. There is a widespread concern about the addition of positions, the proposed salary levels here in Fairview, and the substantial raises for these positions and other positions that are coming up here in Fairview. My biggest campaign piece was running with transparency, and I promise that I'm going to give clear transparency to everybody behind me and everybody watching. Thank you.
Next, we have Carolyn Roberts.
My name is Carolyn Roberts, 7123 Donald Wilson Drive. I would also like to thank every person who just voted me into the Board of Commissioners. I am really grateful for that and look forward to serving this community as best as I can. I also want to mention that there are still blood drive spots open for tomorrow, so if anybody wants to sign up for that, then please do. But back to what I was saying, part of the reason why I am standing here as a Commissioner-elect is for the very reasons that were just stated by the folks who came up and spoke before me. Whether it's intended or unintended, there is a sense of hidden agenda, a lack of transparency, smiling at people in a condescending way when we're speaking. We have to welcome people into this room, and we have to be transparent with them. We owe that to the people who paid the taxes that have the budget before us. Mr. Doherty, you've been very kind to me. I'm glad I've gotten to know you through this whole process, and I want to reiterate what was said before. None of this is personal, but this is about a responsibility to the taxpayers. My understanding of resolution 4624 to amend the employment agreement of the city manager is that it was not given with consideration and conversation by the Board of Commissioners who was supposed to pass it. It certainly did not get in front of the citizens of Fairview with any kind of meaningful conversation, and I think they would want to know the terms of such an employment agreement, which seems unprecedented and concerning. We have a responsibility for transparency to taxpayers. They should know of the notice of terms in advance. They should be able to understand our hiring processes and what a merit increase is and how it is deserved and earned and the timing of one. I want to reiterate what was already said, that we have got to work on developing public trust. We have to consider planning for the city, which also includes how we are planning the staff. I respectfully request a pause on this for consideration that goes into play with the entire rezoning and ordinances and how we're spending money, how we are thinking about current infrastructure, and how we're planning ahead, which is the job of the new Board of Commissioners that is starting next month. Simply stated, this must be tabled to answer questions and consider how to responsibly move forward if we do with this motion.
Last, we have Sheila Cook.
Can't hear me? Okay, is that better? I'm fairly new to Fairview, and, uh, we liked the city, built a house here, moved not too long ago. Uh, I'm very much on transparency. I was in IT for 35 years plus, and I think everything should be transparent. I'm learning a lot of information. Yes, I've had contractors. I've never seen contractors, one, get a severance, but, okay, that seems excessive. You don't add, I've been a contractor even before, you don't add before they're finished with their contract. Again, nothing to you, I didn't even know who you were, so... But what I'd like to have is more transparency. I looked through the website, maybe I'm not looking correctly, but all these new resolutions, 4424, 4524, et cetera, these should be written out. Things should be shown on, before time, we can actually see what these are. More transparency, more wording, and be able to find things, find contracts, be transparent to what people are doing. This is public money. Thank you.
Item number seven is public announcements, awards and recognition. 7A, city events. Mr. Ross?
Good evening. Just want to remind everyone that tomorrow, we have the blood drive. Um, it's going to be from 10:00 AM until 3:00 PM here at City Hall. And then on, then also tomorrow, there is an event at Booty Nature Center. It's, uh, water wonders, it's an experiment that they're holding there. And on November 11th is Veterans, Veterans Day, and the high school is going to have their Veterans Day celebration, and that starts at 8:30 AM. And we are still accepting, uh, parade, Christmas parade participants. Um, our Christmas parade is, will start at 10:00 AM this year. The theme is Frozen, and, um, we already have several applicants, but we have several spots that are still available. That's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Item 7B will be, um, held at another date. And item 7C, recognition, I'm sorry, item B is recognition of Fairview High School band. Mr. Judd, would you like to come up and give us a little bit of information about what your band has done this year?
Is it okay to face this direction, or should I be facing the Board?
Okay, so we have a picture.
Oh, I have a camera here.
And then also, it, it's whatever you.
Okay, I'm kind of a mirror everywhere, okay. Well, thank you so much for having, uh, this recognition for our, our, uh, Fairview Sound of Gold Band of Guard. Uh, this is my third year at Fairview High School, and, uh, each year, I'm just so proud of the kids' accomplishments, and they by far exceeded expectations for myself and the staff this year. Really, just becoming an amazing set of kiddos. And so, yeah, this, this year, we had four, four different competitions that we went to, and of those four, uh, three of them, we were awarded first-place band. One of them was even the grand champion of the band, which means we were the highest scoring of the entire event. So these, you know, we, we have a total of 32 kids on that field, and they're working really hard, and, you know, there's, I just can't be more proud of their accomplishments. So we have a lot of members here, you can kind of see some of the bling that we've gotten during the season. And, uh, yeah, we'll start with kind of the leadership coming up for our photo right now, and then we'll acknowledge, we have many other band members that are just so proud of their work that they wanted to come out here tonight as well. So, uh, we'll start with our drum majors, we have Bailey Nalls and Sophia Mees, that'll be coming on up right now. So if you don't, give a round of applause. You want to, you guys want to kind of start standing, standing against the, we're about to be taking a photo here. Uh, our woodwind captain, we have Maddox Faircloth. Our, uh, high brass captain, we have Kelly Alonzo Arsenega. Sorry if I butchered that. Uh, our, our low brass captain, uh, we have Laura Carter. And we, we had, we did have many other leadership that just couldn't make it today, but I also want to recognize our Movement 2 soloist, a very fine alto saxophone player, Mr. Davis Kidder. He was our featured member, come on up. And at this time, I'd like to just really acknowledge all the members. They're going to be taking a photo, uh, with, with the Board. So when, so again, thank you guys so much for having us, we appreciate this acknowledgement. All members, all members. This is about a third of the band.
Yeah, guys, y'all want to come in, some, come around tight, tighter, like you love each other? Congratulations. Thank you, thank you so much. Mr. Judd and members of the band and family, you are more than... Was he in the picture? Oh, okay, just wanted to make sure. So, Mr. Judd and family and, uh, band members, you are more than welcome to enjoy the rest of this wonderful meeting, or we'll wait just a second and, you know, let you, uh, exit. Okay, so item 7C will be, um, held at a later date, but I do want to take the time to congratulate the Fairview Middle School football team for being undefeated this season. So congratulations to them. Item number eight, staff comments and monthly reports. A, city manager comments, Mr. Doherty.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. Uh, just wanted to make a few announcements. The, uh, this will be the only Board of Commissioners meeting for the month of November. Uh, the, uh, City Hall will be closed on Monday for Veterans Day. Uh, we'll have Planning Commission meeting next Tuesday. We'll have a round town coffee next Wednesday morning at 8:30 at Anytime Fitness. Uh, October staff reports will be given at the December 5th meeting. And I just wanted to give, uh, just a heartfelt thank you to, to Commissioner Johnson and Commissioner Butler. Uh, we've gotten a lot done in the last 20 months, and, um, one of the biggest things I'm, I'm, I'm most proud of for, for this Board and, and, uh, is, is getting, uh, City of Fairview's pay plan, uh, competitive to where we can, we can hire, um, very, um, competent and qualified employees, and I, that y'all were a big part of that. I just want to say thank you. Other than that, I just will miss y'all, thank you for your service. I want to say congratulations to, um, Don Buffalini and Carolyn Roberts. I know, uh, they, uh, worked really hard for this, uh, for these positions, and, and I just look forward to working with them, uh, going forward. Thank you very much.
Item number nine, consent agenda. 9A, minutes from October 17th, 2024, Board of Commissioner work session. And 9B, minutes from October 17th, 2024, Board of Commissioner regular meeting.
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Item, item 9A and B pass 5-0. Item 10, old business. A, rezone 7208 Cox Pike. I will now open the public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak on this, please come forward.
Mayor, uh, item 10A, rezoning 7208 Cox Pike. This item was not properly noticed due to the applicant having not paid their fees prior to, uh, the 15-day requirement to give out proper public notice. And this item will need to be, is asking to be deferred to December 5th by staff. The applicant has been notified of this. Uh, the fees have now since been paid, and so the December 5th date will be the deferral.
What was the date that they were required to be paid?
For us to issue proper notice is 15 days, and so those fees would have had to be paid prior to the 23rd. They were paid on, uh, November 4th.
Or October 23rd?
Yes, October 23rd.
Ethan, when did you say they were paid?
November 4th.
November 4th. And when was the agenda printed?
The item appeared on the agenda because in the resolution that you have before you has the tonight's date listed in that resolution. And so the item has to appear on the agenda because that date is listed in the resolution. Uh, but the applicant had not paid at that point, and so we are asking for a deferral of that item to December 5th.
So moved. Second.
So do I need to close the public hearing before we, okay. So I'm going to close the public hearing. We probably should have waited to do all that until I did that, so. I'll close the public hearing. We'll recognize, uh, what Ethan just said, and we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler. Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Item 10A passes well for... Are we deferring this, or are we gonna... Not deferring it, but how are we handling putting this back on the agenda?
Item 10A will be deferred until the December 5th Board of Commissioners meeting.
And the time and place will be 6:00 or 7:00 PM at our location presently, Fairview Town Hall.
Correct. 7100 City Centerway.
Okay. So Item 10A deferred to the December 5th meeting. 7:00 PM, 7100 City Centerway.
Item number B. Is the reconsideration, Resolution 78-23, a resolution to annex certain territory upon written consent of the owners and to incorporate the same within the boundaries of the City of Fairview, Tennessee with RS40, single-family residential zoning, map 018, parcel 026.10 and 026.04, 7857 and 7859 Crow Cut Road, 10.07 plus or minus acres. Owners Paul and Carrie Ann Creed. Carla, sorry. Paul and Carla Ann Creed.
Mayor, point of order, this is nitpicky and a bit of form over function, but actually it would be considered a renewal under Roberts rules. It doesn't change what we're doing tonight, but it would be properly called a renewal rather than a reconsideration.
So renewal of Resolution 7823. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Yes.
Thank you. I had voted no on the original deal on this, and one of the reasons was the taking care of the road in front of the property. The county has sent us an email that they're going to be taking care of the road, and the other thing that I was waiting on before to move forward with this was to make sure that we were... The urban growth boundary had been ratified throughout the whole county, which it has, and like I said, the county is taking care of the small distance of the road in between there. So that was my main objective at the time. So I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
I just want to clarify that the motion and the second are for the item plus the condition that's listed, correct? Because the county requires...
Interlocal agreement.
Interlocal agreement, and so I just want to confirm that the motion made included the condition and the second.
Yes, sir. Yes, interlocal agreement. Yes, sir.
Other comments?
I have a question. If I'm not mistaken, did we not create a new zoning specifically for this property, the R120?
I don't know that it was specifically for the property, but we did create a new zoning.
I'm 100% positive it absolutely was for this property. So we created an R120 zoning that we initially, we never had before. We created it specifically for this property. So I think it should be applied to the property in which we created it for, seeing how it has no other use, that we haven't used it anywhere else in the city. It was created, added to our zoning for it.
I believe if when we do annex it originally, it comes in as RS40, and then he would have to reapply for that particular zoning.
Yeah, he can reapply for the RS40.
I mean, there's no point to him coming back and saying, "I want to be required to have more larger lots than smaller ones." I mean, he's going to leave it at R40. It would be silly not to.
As a point of order, I think that's what it automatically comes in, and so it would actually be a separate agenda item. So you could actually run them together, so you could have the annex and then the rezoning from RS40 to the other zone, but that item is not on the agenda tonight, so it will have to be handled separately.
Right.
I don't think we can change the publicly advertised...
But we can't rezone the property without the property owner requesting the rezoning, so there's no point in even creating the R120 because it's not going to actually be used.
I think what was stated that night is that the R120 would be a good opportunity for people to come in at a larger lot size so that people weren't concerned that if it came in 10 acres at 10 different lot, you know, sizes smaller, then, you know, this was a good compromise.
Which is exactly what we're looking at here, right? 10 acres?
Well, if he chooses, he can come back at a later date and ask for that.
Which is no problem.
My apologies, sir. I know we've talked offline a lot, but my answer to you tonight is going to be a no. I'm sorry.
Mayor, can I get clarification? Is this a first or second reading of the renewal? Because there would have been two readings of this resolution. So is this a second and final reading of an annexation?
I don't know. That would be... Ethan would have to answer that question. I don't...
I was under the impression that it was, that it's already passed the board once.
This did pass the board once. It failed at the second reading, and this is a renewal of this second reading.
Okay, so a second reading would traditionally have a public hearing. It would have public notice. It would have public signs. None of that was taken, so the neighbors weren't notified. There wasn't public notice sent out. There wasn't a public hearing for anyone to speak. Is that typical for 10 months later to review it and not be interested in public comment?
I think because it's a renewal of the motion, I don't think those...
We're not interested in the citizen's feedback.
That has been handled, and they carry over because it's a renewal. It's not a new application.
No, that's fair. I think just for transparency, you would have it again to accompany it.
I can't speak to that. I can only speak to the procedure, and I think the procedure is correct tonight as a renewal. And certainly, you're entitled to have an opinion about how it should be...
Yes, sir.
How it might be handled differently.
Mayor, just a couple notes. I still believe that the non-contiguous annexation sets a bad precedent. I think it opens up a growth corridor that we are not prepared to serve. I think it's going to open up. Now you'll have contiguous, almost 300 acres in that area that is not currently contiguous. The Planning Commission unanimously voted this down 7 to 0. Our staff had a negative recommendation on it. And Commissioner McDonald said, "I thought we created a new zoning to try and capture this," and now we've come back and kind of circumvented that. Those are my comments. Just still a similar issue. It's just, I feel like a non-contiguous annexation is not proper. I can't find any planning that recommends it. I can't find a way. The MTS actually has a note that says, "In order for non-contiguous, they recommend the territory must either have an intended use for industrial, commercial, or future residential development, or be owned by a government entity in order to be annexed." So everything that I've read just says this is bad planning for future annexation.
But it is legal.
Can I say something? Previously with the Planning Commission, they voted no because the road was an issue, and that's why it was shot down during the second reading. But as I've gotten the email that Commissioner Hall stated, I've got that email stating that the county is going to take the road. And also, the issue when it comes to the RS120, that's no issue with us changing it to a 120. We can do that at a later date, and if it changes your vote, Commissioner McDonald, I'll say right here and now, we will come back and change it to a 120. And, you know, I would hope that all the work that I've done to get this to work, I hope my word could, you know, give you a little bit more confidence in us.
Mayor, with all respect, if there's new information, and we think that, or assume that the Planning Commission would have adjusted their vote, it should have gone back to the Planning Commission for review, then send back to us with the new information and review.
Or just for clarification on the process, it would have to come before the Board of Commissioners and be sent back to the Planning Commission for them to review this application since it ended with the Board of Commissioners. And then for the RS120, the applicant, if a requested zone is not desired by the applicant, it comes in, as Mr. Hall stated, as RS40. However, the applicant could request to come in as an annexation application with RS120. In this particular case, the RS120, if the applicant desired that today and wanted to be annexed as RS120, they would have to begin the process over with a new application to staff and go back through the process with Planning Commission, and then a first read, a public hearing, and a second read at the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, sir. And that was my understanding. That was their intent with the new zoning, and that was their plan.
Anything else? Ms. Jones?
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Item 10B passes 3-2. Thank you. Item 11, new business. 11A, Resolution 44-24, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, authorizing the mayor to execute the site development agreement contract for AgneP expansion. City engineer.
Thank you, Mayor. We asked for this site development agreement to be deferred to tonight's meeting. The applicant still has not submitted a signed copy of the site development agreement, so we're going to have to continue to defer it to the next meeting, which will be December 5th.
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item 11A for deferral, 5-0. Item 11B, Resolution 45-24, a resolution of the City of Fairview Board of Commissioners to adopt the proposed Planning Commission calendar for February 2025 through February 2026. City planner, Ethan Greer.
The Planning Commission at their last meeting adopted our calendar. Just a recap of what we discussed in that meeting during the adoption of that. We have additionally added a week into our schedule. Currently, we operate on a six-week calendar. An applicant submits an application. A week after their submission, we have a staff applicant meeting with them, with our staff, a member of the Planning Commission, and then they receive their first staff comments back three weeks after their initial submittal date. We have added a week into our schedule due to our staff and how we've been able to transpire our business, trying to get stuff concluded in a timely manner and get those back out. And then on the flip side, the applicants, we had given them previously a week. We are now giving them two weeks, so they have been added a week in at that point. Currently, we perform and go through all the applications prior to them coming to the Planning Commission. We did not have that listed in our schedule, and that was asked to be added by some of our applicants, just so that they have some clarification in the process. And so we added the determination of substantial completion, or submittal completion, date, which is the Friday before the Planning Commission packets go out, and so that we can go through, make sure all of the submittal is complete and accurate, and that we are moving forward with business that is true and faithful to the Planning Commission, so that they have all the best and accurate information. Our Planning Commission packets go out a week prior to the meeting, and then we have a work session date that is the 6:00 PM hour prior to each meeting. And so our Planning Commission viewed this and passed it, and now it is at your desk for consideration. Or viewed it and sent it to you with a positive recommendation for approval.
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item number 11B, new business passes 5-0. Item 11C, Resolution 46-24, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, approving an amendment to the employment agreement for city manager and authorizing the mayor to sign on behalf of the city. Move for approval.
Second, but I have an amendment I would like to present. That being...
The item needs to be before the board to discuss before we can make amendments.
Okay, second.
Appropriately, it needs to be first, second, and then we can have a discussion, and you can offer any amendments.
Thank you.
Question?
Mayor, if I may ask, I'll go. I have a few questions. Tom, I'm just going to start this whole conversation off with letting you know that you could be literally anybody in that seat right now. It has no... What I'm asking has nothing to do with you on a personal level. I respect you as an individual. I appreciate everything you have done for this city, and I look forward to continuing to work with you over the coming years. My questions are, and I don't know who can answer these, why are we talking about this tonight? Who brought up the conversation that your contract needed to be extended? And we'll start there. Does anybody know? Did just show up? It's fine. If you asked for it to have a conversation, that's fine, or I'm just trying to understand who... You did, okay.
I did. I brought it up.
Can you explain to myself as well as the citizens what the urgency on the matter is, and why have this discussion more than a year prior to the current expiration of the current contract?
After my research, I found that this is not uncommon, and I felt that Tom is deserving to, in continuity with our staff, who work with him very well, and researching other cities, I feel like this was appropriate.
That's interesting. I wish that information would have been provided, because I reached out to MTS myself, and the information I found kind of contradicted some of the stuff that's on this contract. Also, as I stated in the very beginning, nothing against you personally, so it has nothing to do with you convincing me that he is a good man or that you're the right guy for the job. I agree in that matter, frankly. According to MTS, it's basically customary to have these conversations start about six months out from expiration, where over a year. They're looking at like-sized communities in Tennessee. As far as pay goes, it's very competitive with what the current contract is, with the addition of the raises that you've experienced, or the increases that you've experienced since the initial contract was signed. And the real head scratcher, the one I cannot understand and can't get, and I've asked again people within MTS, is an 18-month severance is wild to me, especially with someone that we feel is very capable for the job and we have no issues with. Why just willingly increase the financial liability of the City of Fairview? Just for... Because I don't know. I'm looking for an explanation as to why that's in the best interest of the City of Fairview.
In my opinion, I hope that's never the case.
I hope to never use it.
But if it ever is the case, I want it to be worth my time.
Well, I don't doubt that. I mean, if it was my contract, I would absolutely welcome an 18-month severance. I mean, I think anybody would. That's, you know, that's fair. It's just unprecedented. I haven't experienced it. I haven't seen it anywhere in my professional life or the public sphere. And again, it's just to me, it's not that the negotiation of this contract, in my opinion, there should have been an agenda item put on... there should have, in my opinion, there should have been an agenda item put on the BOC's agenda prior for us to discuss what we want that extension to look like. It's been drawn up behind closed doors, and now it's being presented to us with two-fifths of the current BOC on their way out the door. We have two elected individuals that have yet to be sworn into these positions. There is no reason why this is pressing and has to be addressed this evening. It's very strange, I think, that the people that you heard from this, at the beginning of this meeting, as well as some at home, which is probably why we had over 85 people watching the beer board meeting, thinking it was probably this meeting if I had to guess.
It's the band.
It makes...
They were watching for the band.
It makes no sense, and it's not on a personal thing. I'm just honestly trying to justify it from a, from a business perspective, and I, I can't.
When I was approached, I took a little time to think if I would be willing to, to talk to our attorney and get this drawn up. I did find that it is common around election time to try to guarantee leadership stability. I also feel like the staff morale and staff's stability is huge. I believe fiscal stability is, is huge.
By increasing severance for no reason, 12 to 18 months?
Like I said, I don't ever plan on using that.
I don't either, but you never know what the future holds.
And then, I would really, the biggest thing I would like is, is to see some of the, the goals and projects that we've got in place, taking care of things like the police training facility, the justice center, the fire station 32, the zoning ordinance, the street improvements, ADA transition, the American Rescue Plan, Stormwater, the Economic Development Department.
Those are all great things, Mr. Dougherty.
And I'm going to tell you one more thing, Commissioner.
Yeah, and please don't interrupt him. Let him finish.
I did a quick salary study. You can, you can say what you want to say. We are in Williamson County, Franklin, which is nowhere near our size, but they've got, their city manager makes 264, they've got three assistant city managers making a combined of 621,000. Brentwood, again, not in our league, but they're in our county.
How many employees do those, do those cities have?
Franklin's the most at 90,000. Brentwood has 221, the city manager, their assistant city manager makes 193, they're at 45,000 population. Spring Hill, 63,000, their city manager makes 178, their assistant city manager makes 166. Knowlesville, they've got 16,000 population, their city manager makes 173, their assistant city manager makes 140. Thompson Station, whose population is 8,500, their city manager made 166. Where I'm at right now, this increase would be about $9,000 increase to my current salary, which is 6%. I did not think that was outrageous. I could, I could talk about the severance, and I could talk about maybe the five years, and, and I could even talk about staying with a three-year. I just, it, after doing, looking around and talking to a few folks that have been, in fact, I talked to a few other city managers, and I said, well, what, you know, you take an extension when you can get it. So, it's on the table, and if, if it's not the board's choice, then that's fine. I just, I was approached, and it's, it's on the agenda.
I, I believe everything you said. I have no arguments with anything you said. Like I said, I think it's a current, the, the current pay, as well as the additional, is competitive with the area. It's not, that part isn't the egregious part, in my opinion, and it's just, it's the timing of it. It's the why are we making a decision that impacts the City of Fairview for the length of time that it does, when we have two individuals on this board that are on their way out, with two individuals that were just selected by the citizens of this community to make decisions on their behalf, and they are not going to be heard. But we're, it, it just, I'm sorry, I'm, you know, it, it's my opinion, and that's, and you guys can take that for what it is, but I can promise you, there are probably more citizens in this community than you are going to realize that are going to find this to be a very odd situation.
I find the citizens of this community who know Mr. Dougherty and his longevity, he's been here all of his life, our staff has never been happier. I've been involved since 2008. I've never seen our city staff as content and happy and working well together as they have under the, outside of, under the leadership of Mr. Dougherty. We have never been as financially stable with surplus outside of, under the leadership of Mr. Dougherty. And I have researched this, and it is typical for continuity to make a move like this, and there's transparency. We're here. The board's here altogether. We're here to discuss this, and we don't discuss things, or shouldn't be, outside of this courtroom, because that breaks the Open Records Act. So, we're here. The community is invited to come here. It's on the agenda. It's posted. They knew that it was going to be talked about tonight, so everyone's welcome to speak about it. So, we have citizens' comments where they can talk about it and let us hear how they feel, but I've never seen the city in as great of shape, run as well, police department, fire department, as we have had since Mr. Dougherty's been city manager for the past two years. I want him to be compensated equally as others in our community, or in our city, in our county, and he deserves that. There are many cities in our county that are, you know, looking for city managers and would hope to have somebody as, as good as this man. He deserves this. Our community deserves this. They deserve to have a city manager who puts them first, who's physically responsible with their money, who works day and night overtime to make sure that this community's taken care of. I watch, I watch this man. I watch how he spends every day working. I'm here every day, working for our community, making sure that we have the money we need to pay for things in excess, so that we don't get in financial bind like we were a few years ago. And I can't, I can't tell you how much morale change that we've had in our police, fire, staff. I've never seen it in, since 2008 to right now, be as good as it is, and I don't want to lose him. So, there you have it.
If I may, reiterate what I, what I started the entire thing out with, and we are now talking about whether you should be the one that's in this position. That is never what I'm bringing up. I am talking about the terms of the contract and why we're talking about it tonight. I agree with you. He is great, and he does deserve to be here, and you know what? He's got a contract that says he's going to be here for another 13-plus months, so there's no reason to be talking about it tonight on the, on the dawn of an election. The citizens of this community have spoken on who they want to be making decisions for this community. There is no reason why we cannot wait until a meeting after they are sworn in and have this discussion. We could do it in the end of December, we could do it in the beginning of January, we could do it February, we could wait till June. Tom Dougherty will still be the city manager. You're not going anywhere. No one's trying to get rid of you, and myself included, sir, I promise you that. I have no issues with you whatsoever, at all. And like you just said, you'd be open to a three-year or a five-year. I wish we could have had that conversation, but we weren't. Instead, we just get a fully baked, a, a contract offer that we're just supposed to accept, and I find it very strange why this conversation didn't, didn't come up. Nobody suggested anything about talking in private about anything. It was talking about a discussion item on a business meeting on record. Nothing was suggested that any private discussions of any kind should be taking place.
Or we're discussing it, and it's in public. Everyone at home's watching, and everyone here's watching, so transparency, we're discussing it.
Mayor, if I can?
Sure.
I don't believe the mayor negotiating the BOC's intent privately with the city manager is transparent. I think that we should have a workshop. I think that we should have a review. Commissioner McDonald has said it fairly well, it, it's not personal, and, but we've tried to make it personal to push our agenda. I think it's just process, professional process. I sit on another board. We are currently reviewing a CEO contract. The, the employees filled out an anonymous survey, the board members filled out an anonymous survey. You preach that our staff is happy, that our staff is better than it's ever been, but we don't know that. If we, if we would have a professional process and have a third party or some kind of HR program that would do anonymous surveys, we could get professional feedback. We haven't done any kind of evaluation. There was no data, performance evaluation, any information in our packet. We got an agenda a week ago that has this on it. It's the first we've heard of it. We didn't have any workshop, we didn't have a discussion. You negotiate on our behalf to get these terms, and then, and then we come here and you make us feel bad if we don't, if we don't approve it. And so, I think that it could definitely be handled better. It's not going to be my city manager, my decision. This is my last meeting. There's two new people who I think would be great to have in the discussion, and we have 14 months left before the contract is over. I don't understand the rush or the desire to, to do this tonight.
Let me correct you. I did not have a discussion with the city manager. He discussed this with our city attorney.
Mayor, when we started this, you said that you put on the agenda was...
I put it on the agenda, but I have not discussed any of the terms with Mr. Dougherty. He discussed that with the city manager, I mean, the city attorney.
Mayor, if I could?
Yes.
I'd like to ask a question about the, the previous city manager. It was my understanding that he brought his entire contract to this board at the time, and the board had no, no say in it until after it was presented to them. Is that correct or incorrect?
That's correct.
So, we're arguing that people weren't involved in something when the other guy that was here before just drafted himself without the attorney and just, and brought it to this board. I just can't imagine people up here arguing about that.
I don't, I don't believe I was present for that.
And I'm going to tell you, and I'm going to take it a step further, and yes, I just lost an election. For everyone out there that doesn't know me, I'm just like Vice Mayor Butler, I'm on my way out. This is my last meeting, and I know this better than anyone. I've served him for 18 years. Elections have consequences. One consequence is I'm gone and two new people are coming in. And what Tom just stated to y'all is, it is a protection method for him, and if the current board that is still in power thinks he is doing a good job, then they have the right to extend his contract. I'm going to tell you, I was born in 1975. I'm 49 years old, and I believe the year was 1971, and my grandfather was the city manager of Fairview, right where we are now. New board came in the very first meeting. As soon as they were sworn in, they fired him. The very first meeting. And let me tell you, folks, Chris can tell you that he's not going to do that, and I believe him. And the two new people that are coming in could say they're not going to do that, and I believe them. But guess what they can do legally? They can come in here and immediately fire him, and we pay whatever is in his contract currently, and that's how it works. That's what this is about. Everybody can say, oh, we're not going to, we're not going to, we're not going to. This is protection of not just our city manager, but our entire staff that works here at City Hall and all the departments. That's what this is about. It may not pass. I don't know if it has the votes or not. It might, it might not. Do I agree with everything? Probably not, but I do agree with protecting the morale of the employees that work here, and it's the happiest I've seen them in a long time. And I'll tell you, when it's, when, in the 18 years I've served here with all city managers that are all from other states and come in here, the other city manager that did the best job while I was here for those 18 years is sitting down there on the end, Commissioner Hall, when he was the city manager, and the employees loved him. They loved him and they respected him. I just can't, I just can't imagine why people would just get up here, and I think at least one of them was here and voted on the other contract for that previous city manager that he just brought to us. It, it just, I, I can't, I can't believe some of the things I heard. And it is, it is about protecting Tom. There's no doubt. It is about protecting his position in general. We won't say it's just Tom, but if we had another city manager here that was doing a great thing, absolutely, I, I would be in support of the, of the exact same thing. If all the employees are telling me this is the guy they like, or this is the lady they like, then I have no problem entertaining it. I don't know, I believe the mayor when she says she didn't have any part of this. I would say that the city manager is trying to protect himself and protect everyone that's under him, because there has been rumors all around town about him getting fired, somebody else is coming in. Heck, one of the rumors, he was here tonight speaking. Do I think he's really going to take the job and turn down where I've heard he's working now? Absolutely not. I don't, I don't, I don't believe that for a minute, but that's why these things are happening. It happened to my, and, and another thing, I don't know how many people here are old Fairview, but if they are, they know Billy Langford, and his wife was Margie Langford, and she was the city, city recorder at the time. And when they fired my grandfather, she quit right there on the spot that night, doing what Rachel does. These, these decisions that we make up here are serious. These, we have, while we don't have 1,000 employees, the employees we do have, we do value. We care about them, and we should care about them, and we should not say and hide behind, well, this is not about you, Tom. We should speak, if it's, if you don't want to protect Tom, if you don't want to give Tom a contract extension, then don't vote for it. But don't say, Tom, I, I'm going to say all these things, but this isn't about you. I don't agree with that, and I, you do have the right to say that 100%, Brandon does, everybody up here does. I'm just saying, me, myself, I would not do that. I'm going to close with this. I, I do support this. I do think Tom is doing a tremendous job. I just can't imagine in December, the new people getting sworn in and them getting rid of him. I don't think, I don't think they would do that. I really don't think they would, but they could. And if nobody's getting rid of him, what does the contract extension even matter? If, if, if y'all are going to keep him here, then there should, we shouldn't even be having this discussion. We should just say, all right, let's move forward. You know, everybody in here, maybe not all the ladies, but most of the men probably have a, a favorite college football team or professional football team. They'll come in and give a 10-year extension with six years left on the contract. That's not a great analogy, but this is not anything that's unprecedented, is the word I heard earlier. This happens all the time, and it's always around elections. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor?
Yes.
Citizens, I would like for y'all to realize where I'm coming from. I was city manager within two weeks. My CFO gave me a two-week notice. Tom had already applied for the city recorder job at the time that had given the previous city manager a six-weeks notice. So, we knew that she was leaving, so that's the job that Tom applied to. So, I was kind of caught without anybody to pay the bills, write the checks, check the bank accounts, and Tom agreed to move into the CFO position. With his help, we were told that we wouldn't make the second payroll, and we couldn't. I told him in the meantime to check everything that was coming in and let me know by Wednesday so we could know where, where we stood as far as money to go to make payroll. If you can't make the payroll, then you don't have the employees to take care of everything, police department, fire department, or anything. So, it was utmost importance that something had to be done. So, that Wednesday morning, I asked him, I said, put your coat on, we were walking down to the bank. We walked down to the bank, me with the intention of signing a note for the 20-something thousand dollars we were short for, for the payroll on Friday. We went in, sat down with the bank president, told him what, what our problem was. We went in, sat down with the bank president, told him what our problem was. And John Blade, I thank the world of him to this day. He told us not to worry about it. And if it boiled down to it, if I had to sign a note for it, they would take, I would come back later and take care of that. At that same time, we were getting letters from the comptroller's office. And we got one real bad one. He read it to me. Here's another time. We got to go face the music. I said, let's get in the vehicle and go downtown, and we talked to the comptroller. From that day forward, Tom has had the best relationship with the comptroller's office, I would say, as probably of anybody in the state of Tennessee. I don't have a problem with the longevity of the contract. The only thing I would like to make an amendment on was a year severance. And at each year, do a review for the raise. And I'll put that in an amendment motion if anybody is willing to accept that amendment.
Commissioner Hall, so your motion is to amend Item B from 18 months to 12 months.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And then amend. Currently, Item D reads, employer agrees to pay employee for services rendered pursuant hereto to an annual base salary of 158, 857, 96. In addition, employer agrees to increase said base salary or other benefits of the employee to reflect any increase in the cost of living as measured by the annual cost of living as set by the Fairview Board of Commissioners, or 2%, whatever is greater.
Yes, sir. And the performance be evaluated at each year.
Before he gets the cost of living?
The cost of living comes automatically with all the city employees.
Okay, so you want to add a line that says that employee, well, employer will evaluate employee annually to consider a pay increase?
Pay increase over the COLA.
Over the COLA?
Yes.
Okay. Rachel, do you have that motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Second.
It was seconded by Mr. Butler.
Yes, sir.
And I'll back up and make sure, but I want the longevity of the contract to stay.
Yep. Just to reiterate, the motion is to change Item A, which is the severance from 18 months to 12 months, and adjust Item D to add a sentence that says employer will evaluate employees' performance annually to consider a pay increase over the cost of living adjustment.
Yes.
That's the motion. Everything else would remain unchanged.
Yes.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Butler.
Do you happen to know what the prior city manager's severance was? I don't mean to put you on the spot.
No, no, I have no, I have no idea. I can tell you what Tom's contract from January 5th, 2023. At 12, I believe. Well, let me look. I have it here. I just need to find it. Yeah, it was at 12 months termination without cause. He gets 12 months of employees' annual salary. So Mr. Hall's motion in the second would return it to 12 months. I think that was probably the intent.
So we reduced it from a year and a half to 12 months?
The motion is two parts. One was to reduce the severance.
Not Tom's. Not Tom's. The prior.
I can't speak, I mean, I wasn't here, and I wasn't here when this first contract was negotiated either, so I don't know what the prior city administrator's severance was. I was reading off Mr. Doherty's existing contract.
It was a year and a half.
Okay.
I'm just saying.
I don't know that.
Because there was comments that it wasn't precedent, but I mean, his was a year and a half.
Mayor, just, I don't remember or recall the length, but it was also a one-year contract. So if we're going to try and compare apples to apples, let's make sure that we compare everything.
I'm just talking about the severance, not the length.
Mayor, if we're going to open a discussion on the amendment, I would just like to say that I still am not in favor of passing it tonight, but I think the amendment certainly, if it's going to be passed, helps protect citizens' tax dollars a little better, so.
Any other discussion?
I might reflect a little bit of history on me. I didn't receive a severance. I had to take a lower-paying job, and then that was quite a bit lower. But I did not receive my entire contract. So that's the reason I'm in favor of the length of this contract.
Any other discussion? Ms. Jones, if you'll call the roll on the motion as amended?
Need to vote on the amendment, and then we'll go back to the main motion.
Okay.
Which is the contract itself.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
So we're back to the main item as amended. And the main item's been first and seconded, so any additional discussion needs to occur, and then you can call the roll.
Ms. Jones.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
The amendment passes 5-0. The original motion passes 3-2. Item number D, Resolution 47-24, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, confirming the appointment of one citizen to the Parks and Landscapboard. Is the citizen here who has to be on the Parks and Landscapboard? Please come forward. Okay, so I'm going to say something first. With the election, we will possibly have two seats available. So we will have one appointment now, and then I would say, when would that, would that be the first of the year that we would? Or would that be in December?
It could be. I imagine if the board wanted to, they could handle it as early as the December 7th meeting. I believe the election certification occurs November 18th, and the swearing-in will be on the 7th. That will be the two new.
December 5th.
5th. That will be the two new commissioners' first meeting. And as I understand it, the one commissioner's on one of these boards, and so he would resign from that board, and that seat would be open. So I think you could fill it at that December 5th meeting.
Okay, so since December 5th, we'll have two seats open. We'll, if the board so chooses, we can, since we only have two applicants, and we'll have a seat right now and then a seat in December. I'll ask the board how we want to handle this, but I would say that, you know, we could, in my opinion, put both of you on, and one would start now, and one would start in December.
I would, I would recommend that we fill one seat now.
Okay.
And then one seat when it opens up.
Okay.
In December. I understand that typically certification and taking the oath are perfunctory, but it's kind of like kind of your chicken, eggs, chickens before the, eggs before the hatch, whatever the saying is. I always mess them up. So I think on the second seat, I would wait until December to fill it.
Mayor, when is the next meeting of Landscapboard?
It's the first Monday of each month. So that would be.
So there would be one meeting prior.
Second, I think, is what it was.
It's the 2nd of December is the meeting. So there would be one meeting before, before the Board of Commissioner meeting on the 5th.
Why don't we get each gentleman and tell us a little something about them, Mayor, about theirself?
Who's lived here longer?
Oh, Lord.
I'm just. Well, that was quick. Y'all must have talked about it.
Okay, hold on one second. If, if the commissioner-elect would like to resign now, can we put both on, or is it because it's on the agenda as one seat?
You could, but I would encourage Commissioner-elect to continue in his seat until he can't hold it anymore. I mean, that would be up to him.
Well, he's the one who asked that, not me. So I just wanted people to know that I'm not trying to.
I think, I mean, all things considered, I think the best thing to do is appoint one of these gentlemen, and maybe they can choose which one gets appointed tonight, and then appoint the other one. The commissioner takes his seat as commissioner and resigns from this board, and that will open the second seat up. I think that's the most legally proper way to handle it.
I'm going to ask an ugly question. Do we have to still advertise for it again?
Think you would, yeah. But I think that's as simple as putting it on the website, right? So.
Okay.
Okay, so how about, tell us your name and a little bit about yourself.
Good evening. My name is Douglas Campbell. I go by Doug because Douglas sounds really sophisticated. I've lived in Fairview for nine years. I'm currently a supervisor for Metro Parks in Nashville, Tennessee. I've been there for 12 years. I have 15 years of experience in landscaping industry. I owned my own small business when I did live in Nashville, before my wife and I moved here, with my oldest now. I'm on the board of Fairview Recreation. I've been in that Fairview Recreation for two years. I'm on my third term. I coach, I communicate with all the parents. I love everything about the ballpark. I love our city since my wife and I've moved here. I believe I have the knowledge from my experience to help the volunteer committee to make our city look better. I think that we have some land, if I'm so lucky to be on this board, that we could, we together could get together and look and see where we could add some stuff, beautification, trees, shrubs. I would really like to redo the sign coming up the hill into Fairview. I've, I understand that the lighting was there several years ago. I actually stopped by and looked at it. It's still lighting it up, but it's not like it should be, that I think that when people, A, coming home from Nashville working, it needs to be beautiful. And people that are visiting our city, it should say, Fairview, welcome to Fairview. And so when they get here, you know, they need to know that we have a nice city. I just have a lot of ideas that I think that the board could, we could work together and make. Also, I've heard that we have a park coming where possibly the farmer's market will be. There's different areas that I think that if I know the landscape and the areas of the city that we can actually put trees or plants, I think we could make this city look a lot better. And I would appreciate your vote, unless Joseph White was to say something negative about me. So I think he's gone Houdini now, and he's disappeared, but unless he comes and says something negative, I would sure appreciate your vote.
I think he reserves that for me.
I'm Dale Liedel, originally from Minnesota. Spent 28 years in the Army, retired back in 2015, moved out here. Spent most of my time in Brentwood, but now in July, bought a house out here in Fairview. It's a little bit quieter community. Other than that, I like trees. Thank you.
Thank you.
I nominate Doug Campbell. Do we nominate? Is that what it is?
Second.
Do you say your name? Little, Liedel? What? L? L-I-E-T, okay? Liedel, L-I-D. I was looking at the audience instead of the screen. Okay. So we have a nomination and a second, and any other discussion on this?
Mayor, I'll just say, excited to have two applicants. I've seen Mr. Campbell work for other organizations, and he is a workhorse and will be an asset to us, and hopefully we'll have another opening next month for you, Mr. Liedel.
All right. Ms. Jones?
Commissioner McDonald.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Welcome, Mr. Campbell, to the Parks and Landscapboard. Item number E. Item 11E is Resolution 48-24, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, authorizing the mayor to execute the Northwest Highway Development Agreement. I make a motion to defer.
I make a motion to defer. Mr. Carter, do you have comments?
I gave my legal recommendation during our executive session.
Okay, it just has your name on it, so that's why I said that.
I don't have any comments other than that.
I will make a comment. We've got a lot of documents to go through and this is the largest development that has ever been, has ever come before the City of Fairview, Tennessee. I have voted no on this since the beginning. I've listened to the citizens. I don't think this is a good development for that area. And, but I do feel like with the information, lots of information that we were given, that it's going to take some time to go through it, consider it. And I was told that we have 30 days. I looked at the next meeting, it's 27 days. So, we will make a decision before that 30 days is up. That's why I made the motion to defer. And I think, you know, since the new commissioners coming to the board would like to be a part and weigh in on this, that would be a good time for them to be able to do that. So that's why I made the motion to defer.
Mayor, just for clarification, does the 30 days start tonight or when we received the notice?
When we received the notice.
So I think that would be outside of the 30-day scope, would be the next meeting. And what documents you referring to? Just the notice that they sent? Is that what you're referring to?
No, all the legal documents. I need to read over those. I've been a no on this from the beginning because I've considered the traffic implications. I've considered almost 500 houses on Northwest Highway. I've listened to the citizens not wanting that kind of density in that area and I've never voted yes on this. So, I just, without reading all the documentation that has, that we need to read to really understand the full implication of voting yes on this, I need time to do that.
Just for transparency, this is approved in 2008. You're on the Planning Commission. You did vote yes in 2008.
2008 was a different day.
But that is when this was approved.
2008 was a different day. It was not the same development. Hold on, it was not the same development and also it was conventional sewer, not a step system like it is today, which changes the whole dynamic of this property.
Yes, ma'am, understood. I'm just trying to clarify the never voting. It was approved in 2008.
Mayor, I need to ask the attorney one quick question. Mr. Carter, if this falls under the 30-day limit, could we have a special board meeting called to look at this if we agree to a deferral right now until she has a chance to look over everything?
The mayor can call a special called meeting or any two commissioners can call a special called meeting.
Do you have a specific deadline according to what Vice Mayor just asked?
I made my legal recommendation during our meeting and the only new information are the two demand letters. Everything else remains the same and my opinion about it hasn't changed.
Mayor, if I could, when would you consider having a special meeting if that needs to happen since the-
When is the 30 days up? Mr. Carter, when is the 30 days up?
Be 30 days from the letter that I forwarded, two letters I forwarded to you, so.
Looks like you sent that at October 28th.
The one letter is dated October 28th and the other letter is dated, they're also, both dated October 28th.
Okay, so would the board consider Tuesday, November 26th?
Is that the week of Thanksgiving?
Yes, it is. I think we've already discussed that.
Sure we don't even have a meeting scheduled because of travel?
That's right.
What about the prior Thursday?
The meeting we canceled?
Is that the one that was canceled?
Yes.
Well, that would be thinking, well, no, if, I think the mayor's out of town.
I'm out of town on a mayor's conference.
What about a week from tonight? Would that give you enough time?
Mayor, I think we're just getting into a gray area with an election. I've been asked to turn my documents in or my items in tonight as if this was my last meeting. So I don't, I don't know how that works with certification and things like that.
Oh, the certification on the election is November 18th. Mr. Carter, do you know if they would extend this a couple weeks or a week? I think it's maybe a week and a half.
I think their timeline is very clear. That's why it was on the agenda tonight. So, I don't know anything other than what I've already shared with you and the recommendation that I, the considered legal recommendation that I made.
Do we have a representative from this project?
Danny Clausen, Nolansville, Tennessee, and our attorney recommends no comment to you. Thank you.
Mayor, may I?
Thank you.
My opinion on the matter, yeah, I'm sitting in silence here. You know, it's one that, no one likes it, right? No one's up here shouting up and down that we love it, we love it, we love it, we want this, we can't wait for it to come. I mean, it is, you know, for lack of a better term, a sin of the past that we have to deal with, no offense to the applicants here. However, I feel like we have been talking about this for about as long as I can remember. As long as I've been a part of this community involved in the Planning Commission and prior to this, it's always been a topic of discussion. I feel like there's no time better than the present. We're all here. We had, what I feel like very thorough legal advice prior to this in our meeting and I personally would like to take action on this tonight.
I don't have my calendar in front of me, so it's whatever y'all want to do. I'm just gone from the 19th through the 22nd.
So, called, there's been a first and a second on a motion to defer. I don't think it's necessarily appropriate to be trying to schedule a special called meeting until it's actually deferred. So unless anyone has additional discussion on the motion to defer, it would be appropriate to vote on it. And then any subsequent motions, depending on what happens with that motion, I think that would be the proper order of events.
Ms. Jones?
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald?
Nay.
Commissioner Hall?
Nay, with the attorney's advice.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Now we're back to the main item. There's been a first and a second, so unless there's additional discussion, I think needs to be a vote.
Any additional discussion?
Mr. Carter, there was not a first and a second.
I don't believe there was a motion to approve. I stand corrected then.
Okay. So we're back to-
Someone needs to make a motion to do something.
We're back to the original item.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I'll go ahead and start my, I'll speak first since I'm making the motion. There's a lot of people in this community, in this room that aren't happy with that and I understand it completely and thoroughly. I'm not proud of the one that has to make the motion to do that. I'm not proud that we have to be the board that ultimately ends up being hung with this disaster and we're going to forever be responsible for it. However, that is what it is and we have been informed, well, it is what it is and just sometimes you have to do things that you know you don't necessarily agree with or that you're happy about, but it's just what needs to be done to protect the city and keep its interests at heart. And I know that seems contradictory to voting yes for a sizable development, but there was a lot of conversation, a lot of diligence, a lot of reading, a lot of, over the years on this matter, to where I can feel comfortable at night knowing that I did everything I could to learn as much as I could about this property and look at every possible opportunity that we had to consider. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Ms. Jones?
Commissioner McDonald?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
I have never voted for this project in all the years. But in order to protect the city tonight, I'm going to have to say yes.
Mayor Anderson?
No. Passes 3-2. Item 11F, Resolution 49-24, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, authorizing the mayor to execute the site development agreement contract for Aiden Woods Phase 4, City Engineer.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a point of clarification, no relation to the previous item, this is a separate subdivision. This is a subdivision development agreement for Aiden Woods Phase 4 located at 7431 Crow Cut Road, map 46 and parcel 16.01. This is consisting of 20 residential lots and has a site reclamation bond in the amount of $321,163 and a performance bond in the amount of $1,018,823. Any questions?
Second.
Any discussion from the board? Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Item 11F passes 5-0. Item 11G, Resolution 50-24, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners authorizing the Fairview Police Department to continue participating in the Law Enforcement Support Office 1033 program. Is there-
I'm old.
Okay.
Chief could not make it tonight. He had something come up, but this is just in order for them to continue with their program, this is the LISO program. They need to have a public acknowledgement and this gives them that. So I just need to announce it publicly and then the board give them the green light to keep doing it.
Second. I just wanted to say a couple words about the LISO program. Chief Humphries and Mark Sutton, they went over this program with me and I wasn't real familiar with it and excited to know that we have this program available to us. I thank Mark Sutton for his time and diligence going through all the items. The way the program works is the government will surplus items and each municipality has the opportunity, if they're involved in this program, to go through the items each day to see what is available to us. When we decide to participate in this program, we were able to acquire, if you, sometimes if you've noticed on the front lawn, we have a tractor trailer rig. In order to acquire the big items that we can use either to keep or to, after a year, sell, which the police department's able to use that money, like to buy police cars and so forth, we have to be able to go pick up those items and bring them back to our community. So it was fortunate for us to be able to get that tractor trailer rig and it was at no cost to our, it was $1, to our community. These items are at no cost to our community and when we acquire these items, which we pick up, the larger ones with our tractor trailer rig, then we can, like I said, we can keep them for a year and then decide to sell them, use the money for the police department or in many cases, the items we are able to keep. I know that some of you have seen, it's sort of like a trailer looking, you know, outside when we had our 3rd of July celebration. Last year, we had many, it was very hot. Sometimes when we have it, it's over 100 degrees and our people who come and perform are in, you know, sometimes elaborate costumes and stuff and they were very overheated. So, we were fortunate to receive this item, to be able to pick it up and use this for, it's like a portable command center is what I call it, but we were able to use it to cool these performers off and they could stay in this area and not get overheated. So, but we use it for many other things as well, but that was, that's one that we use it- use it for. We also have other equipment that we've received, cherry pickers. We can use those to change out our lights and hang banners and different things like that, so we don't have to use taxpayer money to rent any of this. So I'm excited that we're involved in this program, and I think it's very good for our community to be good stewards of our citizens' tax dollars.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Item 11G passes five, zero. Item 12, Round Table, Mayor and Commissioners. Commissioner Hall?
Um, Wayne, they're saying that they can't hear you.
Sorry, I didn't have my thing on. I was looking for something else. Anyway, first off, I want to thank all the employees and all the dedication that they go through every day to help protect the citizens of this community. They mean so much to me, and I know they do to every citizen that is here. The next thing is Stuart and Brandon, I'm going to miss both of y'all. Y'all mean a lot to me, and I hate that y'all are not on this next board. I want to congratulate Ms. Roberts and Mr. Buffalini on their election to the Board of Commissioners. Thank y'all for putting in a hard work. I know how hard it is. The next thing I want to do is read an email that we've gotten from the state of Tennessee regarding the planning, replanning of the dead trees and shrubs up at the exchange, 196 Exchange. And if you bear with me, my phone keeps coming off, and this is just a personal email that was sent to me. It was...I just want to reflect it to y'all, and it was asked by the Parks and Landscape Board to repeat it if at all possible. So just bear with me. Just a quick note that a representative from the City of Fairview has reached out, that being me, and they'll be replacing dead trees and damaged trees at the interchange of Tennessee 100 and Tennessee 96 this fall. These replacements will be the existing trees approved as a part of the Tennessee Rose Case Projects from 10 years ago. Some species in some planting locations circling this...where he CC'd the city manager to this email, and they will be the exact same species and the exact same locations where the others are at. So just wanted to let the citizens know that we've been working on this for quite some time, but we had a lot of things to go through to get to this point. And so now that the Parks and Landscape Board is considered an actual representative board, then not a representative, but an advisory board, that was part of the holdup before we could actually retrieve this information. But hopefully in the near future, Mr. Dougherty will see to it that we get moving forward with this. Thank you for being here tonight, and I hope everything is done good. Thanks.
Mr. McDonald?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I just want to...I'm sure she's watching at home, but Ms. Teroli, I'm thinking about you. I look out there and I don't see her sitting here. It's cause for concern, so I hope everything is okay. Very good, enjoying herself, but I'm sure she's still tuned in. Congrats to Doug. I think you're going to do great on that board. I know that's like your passion, and I'm excited to see what you can do with that position. So congrats, and look forward to you, sir, coming back and filling that next seat once that opens up. Congrats to the two new commissioners. I'm sure you guys are just eager to get up here and jump into this. I look forward to having you on here. I look forward to the conversations and the debate and the...just the progress and the...I guess just the...what's the word I'm looking for? I went blank, but just everything we can do for the City of Fairview and do it in a way where we can have debate, we can have passionate discussion and understand that it's not personal. It's not anything other than just we're trying to do what we were put in these seats to do, which is make decisions for the citizens of this community the best that we can. With that, I also want to say thank you to Mr. Stuart Johnson and Mr. Brandon Butler. It has been a joy. I know we've butted heads at times, but that's what we're here to do, so that's okay. But I really have enjoyed getting to know both of you over the years. Brandon, you and I have developed quite a friendship with football and everything like that, so I'm sure I will be seeing you around, but I am greatly appreciative of the time you have served at this community. I know it's been a long time that you've been involved, and it's going to probably feel very weird when you realize that you don't have anything to do here. I have no doubts that I am not the only one in this community very appreciative to the both of you, so thank you to you both. And that is all for me tonight.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I would like to piggyback off of what Commissioner McDonald just said and offer a personal apology for being so passionate during the city manager's discussion. So he is exactly right. That's what we do up here, and we're still friends when we leave. Welcome, Commissioner-elect Buffalini, Commissioner-elect Roberts. Just a few short weeks, you'll be up here, I promise, so I just...I hope and pray that y'all do exactly what you said, and everything is great for the city in the years to come, and I think I'm leaving the city in great hands. So thank y'all very much. I would like to thank the citizens that elected me to four terms here and the board that appointed me for the last two years that I have served. I would like to thank all the city staff for all the years that I've been here in the good and bad times. And who knows? I'm going to get my signs up this weekend, and I'm going to put them back in storage, and you never know, you might see them again. I will never say no. And they will say reelect if I ever come back again, so just so everybody knows, if anybody's unclear on that, that you would be electing me again. Not that I'll win, but you would be if I did win, and just like President-elect Trump was reelected to the position he once held. So thank you very much.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Thank you, Mayor. I promised I wouldn't cry. I'll do my best. That's a joke. Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson, for your service, your continued years of service, and always being willing for a good conversation. Congratulations to Ms. Roberts and Mr. Buffalini, and best of luck. I hope you continue to carry on the passion and the good discussion. I want to give a big shout out to Ethan. A couple weeks ago, he came to WCAR in front of a packed room of 100 people, gave a presentation on planning for Fairview, what we have going on, what our rules and regulations are, and he did a tremendous job, and so he represented Fairview very well. Since 2013, I've served on a board or a commission, tree board, park board or something, so this is going to be very bittersweet and very different, but I've enjoyed all my time, and just a simple thank you. Thank you for voting in me and letting me serve. I've enjoyed it.
I think we should...
Could I say one more thing?
Sure.
Because I feel bad for this. Brandon, I want to personally thank you as well, and I should not have missed that. Okay, thank you.
Well, I want to take the opportunity to thank both of these guys, so why don't we give them a round of applause? Because... Honestly, we don't always see eye to eye, and that's okay. That's why we have five people up here, because, you know, I think we all are passionate about the same things and different things and, you know, try to always, I mean, do our best. So, you know, I've served with Brandon for a long time, and I'm going to tell you a little story about Stuart, but I just, you know, I appreciate what they brought to the board. So earlier, it was brought up that...I was brought up on 24 counts of ethics violations during this campaign. Fox 17 News sought me out. I agreed to sit down and talk with them. 23 of those counts, they couldn't even find anything to even talk about because there was nothing valid about them. The last one that they decided to talk about was me being Stuart's campaign treasurer and supporting him, just like many other mayors in our county have done in the past. It's not illegal. But I want you to know, and I want the community to know, why I did this. Back in the early 2000s, I lived on Highway 96 out on the highway where Caspian Hills is. There's still is my log cabin that is out on that property. For whatever reason, the county decided that the bus was to catch or was to pick up my daughter on the opposite side of the highway. So every morning I had to watch her, I'm sorry, cross that highway and risk her life, basically, to catch, to get on that bus. So I would sit there in my vehicle and then get out when the bus got there, and Mr. Rainey, I don't know if any of y'all know him, but I know that Tom and some of the people who've been here for a while do, he would sit up there and he'd put his signs out and his flashers, and he would motion my daughter, who was, you know, like in kindergarten, to get on the bus. And she would cross that highway with me standing there, and we would make sure that she was safe. One morning, when I was standing out there with her, I was eight months pregnant with my son, and my daughter, same as always, started to cross that street, and a delivery van came over the rise and almost took out all three of us because I reached out and grabbed her and pulled her back, and they literally missed her less than an inch, me, my unborn child, and my daughter. The first thing I thought to do was to go to the Board of Commissioners back then, and at that time Stuart was the mayor, and I believe, what, 20 years old?
25.
And 25. And I went before that board after almost losing my life and my child's life, and I asked them if there was anything they could do for me because my driveway connected to the highway, and I reached out to the county, and they wouldn't flip-flop that bus to where the door would open at our driveway. She still had to cross the highway. And I was told by the city manager at the time that I should have thought about where I put my driveway. Well, let me tell you who told me where I could put my driveway. It was T-Dot, because when you connect to the highway, they don't give you a choice. They make you put your driveway where they say you can put your driveway. All I was asking for was a sign that said "Bus Stop Ahead," because where they had me put that driveway was right over this rise. And other than trying to take her to school and get into Nashville, where I worked at an architectural firm, you know, I wanted her to use the bus that was provided. So Stuart Johnson then stood up and said, against what the city manager had recommended to not put a sign out, he said that sign's going to be put out for that family so that at least people are aware that there's a bus stop over that rise. And after that day, I told this man and gave him my word that I would support him from here on out, and that's what I've done. I've been his treasurer in the past when I wasn't even on the board. So if anybody wants to know the story of why I support this man, it's because of what I just told you. So I just wanted everyone to know that. Mr. Doug Campbell, welcome to our Parks and Landscape Board. You and I spent many hours late nights, after midnight, at the Little League World Series, making sure all the fields were wet properly because we had this new dirt brought in and, you know, so that the girls wouldn't get skin up knees and everything, but unfortunately it had to be wet all the time because if not, it would loosen and clump and blow away. So I know how hard you work, because that went on for, you know, well, we had to wet it before, so it went on for about a week, and you were out there every day, and you worked very hard, and I saw how much you cared for our community and the girls by doing that because you didn't get paid a dime for that, and I really appreciate that, and I'm looking forward to you being on our Parks and Landscape Board. To the Creed family, I know what y'all have been through, and I know that your mom is, you know, has fought cancer, and she goes through treatments right now, and I know what you've been through, and I know what this means to you to have your brothers living there right on that property with you, and I know what that means to your dad to leave that property to you, and I just welcome you to the City of Fairview. If anyone wants to be annexed into our city and they're in our urban growth boundary, that is absolutely legal, and I want them to be a part of our city if that's what they desire. So I say welcome to you. I know that you have a passion for Fairview, and I know that you want to be up here, and we're all going to work together. I mean, like with this group, we may not see eye to eye, but I think we all have our citizens' best interest at heart, and I want us all to work together. I am transparent, but maybe passionate to a fault to where when things happen, you know, I want it brought here and us discuss. So anything we have that we feel like is important to this community, whether it be our city manager, who, like I said, I've been involved since 2008, I've never, ever been involved with a city manager like him. So yes, having him here for a long, a long time, and you'll find...I have a lot of extra time. My kids are grown, and, you know, I don't have...I have a lot of time to be here. I see. I'm here seeing how these...how our staff loves him, respects him, and I've just never seen this...a group of people who are so excited to come to work and work for this city as the group we have right now. And this is nothing new. I mean, if you watch our meetings, you hear me say this all the time. I say it all the time, how wonderful our city manager is, how physically responsible he is, how we have never been in this financial state as we are now, as good as it is right now, and this man sees to that. It's really fortunate that we have, you know, I mean, yeah, M-TAS can go out and find somebody from out of the state or wherever, but to have...to be as fortunate as we are to have somebody who's grown up here that really knows our community and also was our CFMO who knows our finances and has been in the most dismal situation, but has risen to the top and keeps us in a great place financially. He is a benefit to our community, and I would do this over and over again to make sure that he is still our city manager as long as we can have him. And I know that... And I know that when you two get involved, you're going to see what I see about this man. I've never seen anyone give the time and dedication to our city employees and our finances as he does. This whole town of over 10,000 people can be proud to have this man as their city manager, and I want to be competitive so that we don't lose him, because if any other community, municipality knew about him, they'd try to snatch him in a heartbeat. And I don't want that to ever happen. And I guess a smile must be negative, so I guess I'll frown from now on. So I don't understand when I'm smiling at people if that's, you know, a negative. I don't think that is, but anyway. I just want to let everybody know that I always say this, let's please keep our community beautiful, and let's help pick up trash and not throw it out. I entertain a motion to adjourn.